Monday, April 11th, 2022, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First item of business is the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, the invocation will be led by Commissioner Gary Roberts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Bree King. Would you please stand?
Father, I want to thank you for the opportunity we have to serve this community, be with us and watch over us and give us wisdom and knowledge in our decisions that we make. Thank you again for honoring us, to serve us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And number four is roll call.
Commissioner Rutherford? Commissioner King?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
Chairperson Searcher?
Here.
Number five is approval of minutes from the February 14th, 2022, meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 14th, 2022, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to announcements. Any announcements? Well, I'll go ahead and make an announcement that just to remind the Commission that we do have another meeting this month. It's on April 25th. It is going to be held at the Humboldt Unified School District Bus Barn on Robert Road. Everyone did receive the agenda this evening, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows that. This evening, we have two public hearing items, and with the public hearing items, staff will make their presentation. The Commission will ask staff any questions that they may have, and then after questions of staff are completed, we will open the floor to public hearings on both of those items. So, moving on to public hearing items, the first one on the agenda is General Plan Amendment 21-001, Discussion and Consideration of the Town of Prescott Valley General Plan 2035 Draft Document. And presenting this evening is Mr. Wayne Ballmer. Wayne, welcome back.
He's back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Chairman members of the board. I'm glad to be here this evening. It's been a while since we've spoken, and last time I saw you and we visited was in December, and we had our first draft of our general plan done, and that we were going to now send it out to various agencies and get comments back and comments from other people, and then that is what has brought me here this evening. So, just some background, this is our current general plan. It was done in 2012. We need to update it every 10 years, so that's why we will have it on the ballot for this fall, for November. Every community in Arizona must have a general plan. They're good for 10 years, and ours is dated because of not only the 10 years, but the growth of the community has changed so much since then that the council felt it was very important to move forward, and that's why we're in this process that we are. Now, we've all looked at our older general plan, and it read more like an encyclopedia, maybe, not a lot of pictures. The new one is supposed to look more like a magazine, more colors, more graphics, more pictures, more focus on goals, and those kinds of things that are really important and less on tables and statistics and those sorts of things. So, you'll find it's shorter, hopefully it's easier to read, it's a more interesting document to read than before, and it's something that the community will appreciate as we move forward. This is the cover. You have now the draft that you will be seeing on the 25th. In your packet, we had the pages that we had changes on, and we highlighted them in yellow and gave those to you so you could see the pages that we were changing, and now we've merged all of those together in the time between when your packet went out and now to produce the document that you have. We showed that to the council last Thursday, so we've gotten their input on it. The vice mayor's given us input. Hopefully, we'll get input from you and others on it before it comes to the meeting on the 25th. But you have now the compiled comments that we have received to date with the new logo. The mayor wanted to be sure we had the new logo in there. So, each of the chapters, each of the sections that we have is required by state law. It looks kind of lengthy, but the state tells us all the things that we should be addressing in our general plan. So, some of the changes from our previous plan are we have more current cross-sections. You may have noticed that. Updated goals, updated population estimates. We now have the 2020 census material where before we were talking about the 2019 census. We've incorporated more of the information that we've gotten from citizens on the citizen review that we'll talk about in just a minute. We've updated our land use maps. We've updated our circulation maps, so it looks much different if you look through there than the one did in the fall. We also finished our 20-question survey. This is really interesting because 502 people took the time to fill out this survey, and you can only do it once because of the way the survey was set up. So, 500 people in your community gave us input on those questions, and you have it. There's patterns about what they like, what they don't like, and we've tried to reflect those in the goals. What can we do to encourage what they like and support it? And if there's an issue, like traffic is a common one, what can we do to improve that situation in the future? And the council's reviewed those and is concurrent on that. The next one we did was, remember that one? We said, what are the top five things, and what things do you like, what things would change? 454 filled that one out. So, 956 people submitted information on your general plan. Normally, when you do these, you know, pre-COVID, you would have 10 meetings around your community, and you'd hope 10 people come to each meeting, and if you did, that was a great turnout. But you have almost 10 times that, and that's really, I think, a positive thing for that your citizens would take the time to fill out a survey, to give you their thoughts that we could then put into our general plan. Here's some of the things they liked when we said, you know, what do you like? Not so much. You can read down the list there. There are a lot of good positives, some negatives that we look at, but they can all be addressed. They're not fatal flaws. They're things that with attention, you can improve. And things 10 years from now? This was really heartening when we finished it, to see the positive things, you know, one-of-a-kind, vibrant, progressive, festive, really positive words that your citizens are using to say they like living here, they are proud to live here, they look forward to living here over the next 10 years. So, some of the new goals and policies that we've included, we've added things about traffic circulation, about water conservation, about landscaping and design, and a couple of things that were kind of overlooked previously about displaying the town's commitment to not having housing discrimination, that we need to be really positive and proactive on those kinds of things, and compatibility between adjacent uses. You have a lot of residential areas, and commercial areas are now developing, and how do you have a good transition between those two so that the residents feel their properties were protected? So, we have, and you can read through the rest of them, but a growing community, you see these changes, and Prescott Valley's ahead of the game in trying to address them. Water conservation is one that we have spent more time on than in the past. You'll see brochures. The town has been very forward on that. They've even hired some people in addition to this to promote water. And on the right is the booklet that actually is put out by the Arizona Department of Water Resources recommending low-water-use plants for use in our area that are indigenous to this area. So, Prescott Valley would look more like it would have looked 100 years ago in terms of the plants that you find. Some of the plants that we use are, use a tremendous amount of water, and they aren't native to the area, so if those could transition out into low-water-use plants that are more natural, we see that as a positive thing that the town can look forward to. Then on the circulation plan, we've added some additional notes there. We've the Sun Dog Parkway that's long been talked about. We're showing that now. We're showing some of the other connections down in the southeast where you've had the issues about a development down there, working with them to try to find alternative routes of access as opposed to just the one that's there now. We'll just make it longer. We're working with them on that. On the land use issues, we are looking at showing some of the areas that are currently developed, and what we're showing here in blue, some of those have developed, so we're even making changes from this to show some of those areas now in yellow that have been developed. And so, we want to show people, we're working on that, too. But the land use plan and land uses hasn't changed a lot because we want to be sure that you and the council see those changes as they come forward. One of the issues that we did get of the mailings that we did, we gave you a list of the letter that Fernando sent and 22 agencies that we sent it to. One agency gave us responses back, and it was the Arizona State Land Department, and you have their comments. We have made all of their changes, and this map, for instance, shows they really wanted to highlight the properties they own so that people would know why something isn't being developed or why a road isn't being done because the state owns that property. And so, we emphasize that with this map for them. So, the next steps, you have your meeting tonight. We'll see if there's any feedback from the public or if you have any additional feedback. And as the chair said, we will be together again on the 25th out at the school district. The state requires us to have two meetings at two different locations, which is the reason for that, and then it will go to the council on May 12th. We've already prepared the resolution. You have that in the packet for the meeting on the 25th. We're all ready to go as far as completing the process. Everyone is looking forward to its completion. It's been a long time in coming, and I know some of this material's repetitious, but, you know, people watching it for the first time on television, we want to make sure everybody is up to speed. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Do any commissioners have any comments or questions? Staff?
I do. Thank you, Chair. Mr. Ballmer, it's good to see you again this evening.
Thank you.
I'm quite impressed with the list of 22 mailing list partners that the packages were sent out to. However, on the other hand, I'm somewhat disappointed that some of our partners that are a very important piece of the puzzle didn't reply back or send some of their comments in. And is it worthwhile? And maybe Fernando or you, Mr. Ballmer, could make a phone call to some of these special mailing list partners to ask their thoughts, because some of them, I feel, could be pretty critical.
And Commissioner, I was surprised by that as well, because we touch on so many other communities, and what we do affects them and vice versa. Yes, I can, I will be here again. I'm only here on Fridays, except for today, to visit with you. For next Friday, I can call those people and talk to their planning directors to whom we sent it and see if we can get some additional feedback.
I've just assigned you a workload for Friday.
Yeah.
Do you accept the workload challenge?
Sure.
Absolutely. I think it's important. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Griffiths actually stole my question, so.
Oh, Matt.
Okay. And I was going to basically, to kind of piggyback a little bit, would we allow more of those other agencies to respond if they haven't had a chance?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we will accept comments through your meeting on the 25th, and then we will compile all of them into a new updated book that will go to the council on the 12th. So, we need to have it to the town clerk, a new PDF, electronic version by May 2nd, and the printed books by May 6th. So, we still have a week or so after your meeting to receive additional comments.
The 25th meeting that we have is also a public hearing.
Yes, it is.
Is there, is there anything in that meeting we'll need to vote on it as a board before it goes to the council?
Yes, Commissioner, that is the meeting where you will vote on making a recommendation. And just this afternoon, we completed a press release to be released this afternoon or maybe tomorrow morning, telling people it's available. We will put a link to it on our webpage, so that now that we have a completed draft, an updated draft, we want people who might, you know, those 900 people who follow our webpage to have a look at the whole document. So, hopefully, that will generate some comments as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question about nitpicky things like typos, incomplete sentences, that sort of thing.
Great.
I expected to be corrected by now. Do you want us to bring them up or call them to your attention? I don't think we need to.
We can do them now, or we can do them at the end of the meeting so the people with the next case don't.
I would think it could be done by telephone.
Sure.
Rather than taking everyone's time.
That would be great.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ballmer, with the 900-plus responses you've got, were they geographically a good
area? Did they cover a good area of PV, or was it just one specific area?
Unfortunately, we don't know the answer to that question. And there's another issue, too, which is how many of them were, you know, younger people or older people or working people, or did they, were they renters or owners or whatever? It was basically anyone could comment, but they could only comment once, and we didn't have a lot of additional information about kind of who are you and where do you live?
Geographically, I would think it would be kind of interesting.
It would be, and also kind of the ages and where people live, and, you know, do they have an apartment? Do they have a house? That kind of thing, because those all vary.
But it was, it's very good.
Do any other commissioners have any comments or questions for Mr. Ballmer?
Chair. I do. Hey there. So, since you are the expert, Mr. Ballmer, on this item, my question is, there is a significant list here of 22 different organizations, which is excellent, and I like to see that it's being reviewed by other areas and departments. From your experience, what is the normal response rate? So, you said for us here, you know, we had one. Is that standard to not get responses, or what's your experience with that and how many responses is kind of typical?
Well, my experience has been that generally, the communities are networked fairly well, that Mesa, Queen Creek, Chandler, Gilbert, Tempe, all kind of work as a little group. And when I was, for instance, the planning director in Queen Creek, we had a quarterly meeting, and we invited all the planning directors to come, and we moved it around to the different cities and towns, and each of us had a program. So, we talked about our general plan or our subdivision ordinance or whatever it is we're working on. So, when we sent something out, they would generally all reply because they know it's, you know, touches their border, and we would, I would respond to theirs as well. But what I found here is there isn't quite that working relationship between the communities in our area. I went out to talk to all of them, and that was something that all of them thought could be improved, not just us to them, but, you know, Prescott could work better with us. But I was surprised not to see more responses after visiting, because I went and visited with the planning directors of every community.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the Commission? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ballmer.
Thank you.
This time, I'll open the floor to the public. Anyone wishing to make comments or question, or if anyone has questions on the general plan thus far, please go ahead and step up, and we'll hear your comments.
Joe Hoyt is few point. I have a question for Wayne.
I'm sorry, could you spell your name, please?
And sir, go ahead and direct your questions to the Commission, and we can then have staff.
He said there was a website. I like that. Could he tell us what the website is?
Okay, definitely. I mean, I'm sure, I know it's going to be under.
Because you all have a copy of it, but.
It's going to be under our general website, pvaz.net, but I'm sure that there's going to be special links for the general plan.
All right, could he please let us know? Thank you.
Definitely.
And actually, I had just posted the packet you have for the 25th, which includes the entire document, and that's on the Planning and Zoning webpage for the packet for April 25th. It has everything in its entirety.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the floor to public hearing. Again, this is going to be our first of two public hearings on this item. There'll be additional time for comments or questions at the meeting on April 25th. So, we'll move on to, real quick, before I move on, Wayne, did, you were able to get?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on to item number two under public hearing items, which is zoning map change 22-002. Upon the application of Kimberly-Wombel agent, a request to the Town of Prescott Valley for a zoning map change, ZMC 22-002, from CI, C1, excuse me, Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services to RS Residential and Services on Prescott Valley, Unit 2, lots 419 and 420, located at the northeast corner of Robert Road and Dana Drive. Presenting is Fernando.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Members, as the chairman member said, this is a zoning map change from C1 Commercial Neighborhood Services to RS Residential Services. It is two lots on the corner of Robert Road and Dana. As you can see on the zoning map and on your screen, there are R2 zoning adjacent to that and behind it, there is a C, or R1M residential manufactured home to the left. This actual area is just inside a little island there. It's kind of by itself. It hasn't been developed for a number of years. We believe that that would be a proper use. It does conform to the general plan 2025. The applicant has had a meeting with the neighbors. Two of the neighbors actually showed up. Nobody was in opposition of the project. There was a couple of questions. Here's a site plan showing what the proposal is. As you can see, ingress egress will be off of Robert Road. There are two hammerheads on each side for turning purposes so that we don't back out into Robert Road. Robert Road is a heavily trafficked road, and of course, safety is an issue there. There was a couple of questions that were emailed to me, and I appreciate those in advance. The parking spaces requirement for this project, the town code requires one and a half parking space for one bedroom, and for every two-bedroom and above, two parking spaces will be required. That actually will be reviewed at the time of submit. We will make sure our parking spaces are there and in conformance with that section of code. Our parking spaces are 9 by 20, and like I said, the site has been developed in order for them to have the turnaround to be able to drive out Robert Road and not back up. Because this project is residential, it will now require a handicap parking space. Vehicles will, again, be recommended and not allowed, hopefully, to back out into Robert Road. This project doesn't have a dumpster on it, and that's because they will have individual receptacle units per unit, and those will be put away either in the garage or outside out of public view. There will not be a driveway out onto Dana Road because that hammerhead will stop there. The proximity of the corner to a driveway in that lot is too close. It's not safe for people to back out and go into that, so that's why there is no access onto Dana Road. There will be a screening requirement. That screening requirement will be along the back portion and actually on the area that's zoned for single-family, single-family residential. So, along the two sides, there will be hard surface or screening, actually, so that people can't look into that project or look out. This is actually a rendition of what the proposal is. There is a landscaping requirement. The landscaping will be both on Dana and Robert Road as well. Normally, in this type of a project, there'll be a requirement of one 15-gallon tree per unit and two 5-gallon shrubs. And as you can see by the layout there, there's minimal area for that landscaping. We will take special care to make sure that as they drive out onto Robert Road, that landscaping is not going to interfere with the line of sight as well. One of the other questions that was brought on is, we have a request for a zoning map change, and normally, we see amendments to the general plan or we see the preliminary development plans. Well, when we look at this, these projects as they come in, one of the first things we do is it doesn't conform to the general plan. If it does, there is no need to bring an amendment to the general plan. This actually does conform to our pre-existing general plan 2025, so there was no need for that application. This is a one-off project, so it doesn't require a preliminary development plan, but we do have the use that's proposed on the property. That's all I have for you today. Staff is recommending the Commission approves ZMC 22-002, subject to the following conditions, and those conditions are that it conforms to the town standards in Section 1326, the site development standards, and all building code requirements. Oh, I forgot to add that, because it is a five-plex, anything over three requires them to be sprinkled, so there will be sprinkling systems on this unit. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have.
All right, we'll open to questions from the Commission.
Fernando, I think the plan, the other map that you had that shows there, when I look at that, the 22 feet for the garages, if you have one parking spot for each, that kind of extends out to the shown drive area and the turnaround. For instance, in the lower unit, if the parked, if they parked in front of their garage, there'd be no room for anybody to turn around. So, I guess I would want to make sure that this parking scenario, I don't know how close parking spaces can be done towards Robert Road, but I'm really concerned that that's jammed up a little bit in there and that this plot doesn't, or this site plan doesn't show a reality of parking spaces for cars other than in their garage.
Well, we, town code doesn't allow them to, allow us to count the garages as parking, so they will have to accommodate the two parking spaces in front. They show the 10-foot landscaping script along Robert Road. The town code does allow for residential use to reduce that to seven feet, so there's a little bit of room to play with that, and it will have to conform to the standards of today, of the town code. That hammerhead will have to be utilized, so we will be looking at that, at the plan review.
And that will come back before the board?
That will not come back before the board, not today. If you can make it, you can make it a stipulation, but it will not come back before the board if you approve it today.
Fernando.
So, I'm misunderstanding. Are we just approving the zoning change today?
That is correct. Just the zoning today.
So, if we approve the zoning change, this site plan will go through you, but it won't come back through us?
That's correct. It'll come through us, and it'll go through council as well, and that's why one of the stipulations, you can make that the parking conforms to the standards, that it actually meets the code.
Commissioners.
I would like to know, looking at this building, is this size of the property that they want to build it on, is this comparable to others that are five-plexes within the town? It looks to me like this is almost too big for the property.
Actually, no, it meets, it meets the minimum standards in the town. That's why they're joining the two, and there are, there are lots that have similar type uses, except they're configured differently, so it just appears that way. But yes, in the town, it meets the minimum standard for the lots. What we do is we have a density district calculation, and with the two lots being joined together, meets that density district.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Gonzalez, you made a comment about the trash receptacles, that they would be individually kept at each unit. Then, I'm assuming they would have to be moved out to a street location for whatever day trash pickup is. Is there a sidewalk along this parcel? I didn't remember seeing one.
So. My memory doesn't serve me, that may not.
So, I'm concerned, then, with all these receptacles, now we have a big Now we have a big trash truck stopping on Robert Road, because the truck cannot turn into the complex to pick up trash.
I'm sure we can ask the applicant, they can put a place along Dana Drive off so they can turn around. They have to turn down Dana anyway because there's duplexes along Dana Drive. So, and that's a court, so it kind of goes back, circles back around. So we would, we would ask that, that that be a stipulation, and the applicant is here, we can have them speak to that as well.
I have one more question, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Back to Commissioner Rankin's statement, are we able to stipulate that this comes back before us if there are concerns with parking and layouts of the property?
You can table this, to move it, you can, you can actually table this for a future meeting if you wish to do so.
Mr. Nalini?
For, just for the commission, doing my homework, I went to the property, and I was out on the property with my clipboard, looking important, and like I was somebody. And a couple of people came by and they said, "Oh, are you developing this property?" And I said, "No, I'm on the planning commission, and we're looking at the possibility of rescheduling, redoing the zoning from commercial to multifamily." I got a huge no way. These people in the area say that they really, really need neighborhood commercial, and they don't need any more multifamily. That's just what happened for my going and looking at the property, for what it's worth.
And I can appreciate that. I've been with the town for over 21 years, and we've had a number of people come and ask us for different projects on that location, and nothing really panned out because of the size of the lots themselves. They'd have to do what the developer here is proposing to do, is buy both and join them together and do some kind of a project, but that hasn't happened, so.
Well, and my concern is also that once commercial is gone, and you discover five years later, gee, we really do need this in this area, and there's no commercial land left, maybe we jump into things too quickly.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment.
Vice Chair Rankin, do you have a question?
I guess just back, a statement more than anything, back to my original, is I, I would have a hard time approving this, not knowing really whether the site plan's going to allow the amount of parking that it would require.
Well, again, we wouldn't allow this to go through if it doesn't meet the standards. So it would require that the parking be in place before we, well, before we take it to the town council and before we issue a building permit. So it will, it will actually conform. I mean, it will be brought before you again, depending on that, but that we will make sure that it does conform.
Well, Fernando, I have a few things. Did my homework, and just looking at multifamily that actually has Robert Road access. So south of Spouse, I counted, and this goes down to just a little south of Lakeshore at Robert, we have four multifamily that have access under Robert. 3630 Robert Road, like I said, that's just south of Lakeshore. It's a four-plex, it's two stories. It was constructed in 1995, 27 years ago. R2-3 zoning. 4557 Robert Road, Robert and Preston, it's a four-plex, one-story, constructed in 1999, 23 years ago. R2-3 zoning. 4400 Robert Road, Robert and Duke, it's a triplex, one-story, constructed in 1978, so that's 44 years ago. R2-3 zoning. 3750 Robert Road, Robert and Stevens Court, it's a four-plex, one-story, constructed in 1970, 52 years ago. R2-3 zoning. My concern is that there are no five-plexes south of Spouse on Robert. This feels like it would be better north of Spouse, where there's more multifamily and more differently, every type of plex you can imagine is north of Spouse. Also, there's a lot that are on the roads that are off of Robert Road. But, and again, and knowing that this does a but, a multifamily just next to it, I don't feel it's appropriate in this location. And especially, you know, we're, you're asking us to change zoning for the first time in possibly 23 years, and I just don't feel that, you know, what we did in the past is potentially applicable now. So that's kind of just one of my biggest concerns. I just don't think a five-plex at this location is the right, the right move.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I have a comment. Although I appreciate the need for affordable housing, and I'm reasonably sure that you would make sure everything conform, I'm not comfortable approving something when I can't actually see the parking, and I see these potentially three-bedroom apartments with a garage for one car, and I don't see where there's going to be any parking. It makes me nervous.
So with that, I mean, Fernando, you mentioned that we could table this and actually have everything presented at one time. Would you recommend that, or, you know, basically see this and have it come, you know, do the zoning map change and then have it come back? What would you recommend?
Well, what we're looking at today is not really the use itself, but the zoning. So if you, the board doesn't feel comfortable with rezoning the property, then I would ask if there's, if there's something that can help them bring this back, and that's going to help them rezone the property, then I would ask that you table it for a future meeting. If there is any, if there's nothing that you believe that the applicant can do to better illustrate their use, then I would ask for a vote today in regards to the changing of the zoning itself.
Well, let's, let's.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would love to hear from the applicant.
I was just about to say that.
The second time you've said that.
You know, you're, you're in my head.
I think that's awesome.
Oh, that's what I was going to say. Let's, let's think about what Fernando said, but we'll invite the applicant up and have him address the commission.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Wamboldt.
I'm Sunny Ledgerwood. So some of the questions you guys had regarding the property, I can pretty much tell you that.
Go ahead and do me a favor. Go ahead and speak right into the mic.
Oh, some of the questions you guys had regarding the property, I can kind of explain to you in better detail. If you look at the drawing, you'll see that it shows that it's 60 feet from the front of the property to the front of the housing. There's a 20-foot setback that's been, that has a dotted line. So that gives us 40 feet for the vehicles to be parked, and the city only requires 20 feet to be paved. So you have a 20-foot parking spot where all the cars park, and there's an additional 20 feet that they could back up from the hammerhead to be able to pull out. So you can't see that based on the drawing because it's not to scale, but there is actually over 40 feet there that they can have for parking. So that would address your parking concern. If we wanted to put a trash can on the side of Dana, we have no problem with that. You know, creating a driveway that would grab the trash and enclose that would be good. My idea was just to hide it because I didn't want people to see a massive trash can in the front of Robert Road. What was the other questions that you guys had? I don't recall all of them. Just trying to remember.
Well, primarily, I know it's parking and the trash can situation, and then just overall concerns with just the zoning.
This property has been on the market for 16 years, and no one's been able to find a use for it. I brought all of those MLS listings to show you, since 2006, this property's been on the market. And then we asked them if they would be willing to let us try to change it so they could actually sell it, and they've been good enough to allow us to do that and hold on to additional timeframes to let this happen if it happens. When we look at the multifamily use for Prescott Valley, there's literally four properties in all of Prescott Valley that are on the MLS to rent. Four. None of them are apartments, no condos, no trailers, nothing. There's a total of 16 multifamily properties available for the five cities, Chino, Prescott Valley, Prescott, Paulville, Dewey, four in Prescott. So there's a huge lack of multifamily. You say that you can go more on Robert Road, but I don't know what the property's on Robert Road, so there's nowhere else to go other than this last lot. I don't know that it would just sit there. I mean, I really think it would just sit there. I work with a builder that does this stuff all the time. We do a lot of homes here, and literally that's our only option to find something else that would allow for this type of setup.
More housing for people, there's just nothing out there, so.
Any questions from the commission of the applicant?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Ledger, your reputation precedes you.
Sorry.
No. Ms. Wamboldt, number one, I commend both of you for your vision. It's phenomenal what you want to do. You're absolutely right. The housing is very badly needed. You've heard some of our concerns. I'm extremely concerned over parking. These are three-bedroom units. We could have, for all practical purposes, three drivers in each unit. We don't know. We could have families with kids. Where are they going to go and what are they going to do? Would you be willing to go back and rethink this plan somehow and redo it and bring us another look?
There is an option for us to be able to pave the entire front of the property to Robert Road. I think that was your concern with pulling in and driving out and having more space. I think Mr. Rankin acknowledged that, that he wanted to see even more space, but I think if I could give you another 20 feet to be able to pull on, that's 40-something feet to be able to, be able to back out of the 20-foot requirement that we already have. If you allow us to be able to drive into Dana, which we weren't allowed to do, and create a garbage space, we would do that as well. We were trying to fit within the requirements of what the lot would allow. As far as making it smaller, we don't see that it would benefit us from a monetary standpoint for what we're having to pay for the lot in order to be able to make it work for us as far as what the construction costs are going to be as well. So we could make it a four-plex, but it would be a hard look for us because again, what it costs us to build and what the lot costs would kind of determine whether or not we would even do the project.
I totally understand all of that. You've heard a lot of the comments from the commissions, so it's a decision, I think, that you guys have to make. Mr. Gonzalez, maybe can you clarify the Dana access point ingress and egress? Mr. Ledger just mentioned that.
Before the meeting, I had a conversation with our engineer manager, Boyd Robertson, and that was one of the questions I asked in regards to access off of Dana. And he said because of the proximity to the corner, it would just be too dangerous to be able to do that, and that's why. In regards to paving the rest of the fringe off of Robert, well, there is a requirement at least seven feet for multifamily. He's got 10 feet on there, that'll only give him three additional feet moving towards Robert Road. I don't know, and the rear, I think he's pretty close to that setback. We've, we've actually looked at this a couple of times, this project, to see if we can, and this was the, as close as we can get in order to accommodate the needs and the requirements and the safety issues with folks backing out onto Robert Road with those hammerheads. It's, it's really going to be up to the applicants on what they're, they're wanting to do if they want to go back and revisit a site plan and bring this back. Again, it would be something if they believe that they can do to address your issues so that we can bring it back, or, because if, if there isn't anything, looking at the site plan, the applicant knowing the, you know, whatever it is that he can or can't do, I mean, then we can vote on it today if the applicant doesn't believe he can tweak it to make it work. And it has to work for both parts. It has to work for him, for them, and of course, for us as well. Do you have any additional questions?
Hold on just a second. Commissioner, Commissioner Roberts, Vice Chair Rankin wanted to ask a question first, and I'll go to you second.
I have a comment. Being in retail business for 53 years, I can't see that develop into a business area for retail or anything unless it's trashy business, let's say, but that's not for retail. That's just not the area. 53 years tells me it's not.
Vice Chair Rankin.
One of the two of you, Ms. Wamboldt, mentioned the fact that how long had it, these lots have been on the market?
16 years.
16 years.
Well, and, and I look at it is, this is Unit 2. These two lots have actually been out there since probably 1968 or 67. And if they've been on the market as C1 for 16 years, it's, I think sometimes as the board, we'd like to be able to, to force a commu, a commercial project to move into certain properties that are there and available. But I guess my agreement with Commissioner Roberts would be that if, if this was feasible for something commercial, I think it would have happened by now. So I'm not sure of the point that I'm making, but I'm just saying, you know, it's been out there and it's been there for a long time, and nobody has done with it. The only commercial is that that's just south, that, that mini mark that's been there for a few centuries, I think. And, but I, I have a hard time thinking that, that C1 zoning is, is going to pay off. I just don't see that that's happening, so I, I guess that's my only support of, of the changing of the zoning. This parking thing is another thing, but I, I just feel like if it's been there forever and it's not happening, then maybe we as a board need to look at making a change so that we do have some sort of activity there.
And, and thank you for the comment. And one of the things that we actually are doing with the general plan today is talking about transitional zoning, and the RS zoning is a transitional from residential to commercial because there, you are allowed to do some small commercial for residential services. Multifamily is allowed in that zoning district, but it is designed as a transitional, transitional zoning from, from single-family, multifamily to RS. So I don't know if that helps you, but to your point, if something would have happened with the C1, it would have been by now.
Mr. Rufford.
Mr. Chairman, I would think that it might be interesting to see at what price it was offered, that it would depend, wasn't offered at a reasonable price or I'm getting mine kind of price.
So originally, it was, it was offered at $329,000 in 2006, and we have it under contract for $170,000. So that's double what we normally pay for a multifamily lot, and the reason we're accepted is because we're trying to put a five-plex on it, which will allow us a profit that we wouldn't normally have. Typically, we're paying 75,000 to 80,000 for a multifamily lot, and this is 170,000. So we're paying 85,000 before we even do closing costs. So it's over and above what we're comfortable with. But again, if we can get the five-plex on it, then it would work for us. So that was the whole intent. And I'm not opposed to trying to do something better with the parking. I just need guidance from you guys, from what you would accept. I just don't know how to go about that with whatever the rules are for that area. I understand that, I guess if we take it all the way out to the street, that it would cause, to me, a bigger problem because now you have, they could take up more room. And again, we could make the hammerhead, like you said, another three foot bigger. But again, if you look at that, that drawing, it is not to scale, so it makes it look like there's maybe six foot of space before the hammerhead, but there's actually got to be 20 feet there before we can do that.
Chairman, I think he makes a convincing argument for a zoning change.
My concern though with the zoning map change is that a five-plex is, doesn't fit the area. It doesn't, I mean, there's no five-plex south of Robert Road. And just because one was approved 23 years ago, does that make it right to go ahead and do it again? I, I just don't think that, it, it doesn't fit. There's single-family homes, there's commercial. It just seems too big for that area.
The two lots next to Domino's, I purchased those as well, and we'll be taking those two lots, and then we're going to combine those, and that will be a fiveplex as well. And that is zoned for the same exact square footage. So you will see one on the other side of that as well eventually. It's going to take me about six more months to get the survey done and then get that approved. I'd say it's going to take about two weeks to have that approved, to make it one single lot, but that will be the end effect of that one as well. Yeah, you won't see one right this minute, but you're going to be, you'll see that one for sure.
But I guess, I think a lot of it is, you know, a fourplex, since there are more fourplex in the area, fourplex would allow you even more room for parking. Why not do a fourplex?
Because financially, it's not going to make sense to just do a fourplex if we're spending so much on the lot.
Well, let's talk about that. So if we were to take one lot away, how do we add more? I cannot get more parking there based on the current requirements from the city, whether it's a fiveplex or a fourplex.
Okay.
And the hammerheads aren't required, it was just something that we wanted, we thought would be better for you guys to approve because it was something that wasn't required.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman. I came here this evening, Mr. Ledger and Ms. Wumble?
Wumble, yeah.
Mumble, Wumble?
Wumble, Wumble.
And I was voting no on this.
Well, like I said, we would do the same. If it doesn't get approved, we will back out of it.
No. I've heard the transitional zoning. I understand what Mr. Commissioner Rankin said and my fellow commissioner, Mr. Roberts, that this property has been there for a while. I didn't look at those components of it. I'm very concerned, again, about the fiveplex. I don't want to vote no on this. I think some of my other fellow commissioners, we want to support this. We know we need housing. Can you go back? Let's, do we postpone this? I don't know what the rules and regulations are. To come back with another drawing that is per scale, maybe look at a fourplex, put your thought process to this, and figure out how we make it work. Again, your vision of what you're doing, and Mr. Ledger, the fourplexes and triplexes and threeplexes that you have built in Prescott Valley, kudos to you for giving families homes.
If you wanted to move it, well, if you want to move it to another date, we just vote to continue this to the next meeting.
Yeah.
But it would not be the April 25th meeting, since that's a special meeting simply for the general plans, it would be on the May.
No, I mean, I want to clarify. I mean, I'm with Commissioner Griffiths. I agree with the transitional zoning. I mean, I do hear what Commissioner Laney's saying with, you know, what if in the future, but transitional zoning does allow for both, you know, commercial and residential. Again, my issue is that, does this fit that specific area? And yes, we have, you know, multifamily right next to it on the, basically Dana Drive side of it, but putting something, again, that is fronting Robert Road, we haven't had anything like this in that area in 23 years. And again, just because it was done before doesn't make it right. And I, you know, I have an issue with that per se, but I definitely am with Commissioner Griffiths on this one. I can't support a fiveplex. I realize it's economically feasible, but I just doesn't, I don't feel like it fits the surrounding area. I mean, and again, we can table this, you guys can think about it, we can hear it again. I have, you know, no problems with that. That way you hear what we're saying, kind of our concerns, and then you can, you know, come back and we can go from there.
Do you guys have a timeframe of what you think that meeting would be, that we would be able to come back and talk to you? Our issue is that obviously we're dealing with a seller that's given us this amount of time to allow this to take the time that it needs. We would then have to ask them to extend that again.
We're checking on that right now. My guess is that it's probably going to be the May meeting if...
And then we have to get, like if we did decide to do a fourplex, we have to have all new drawings, we have to do another meeting, do we want that to change?
I mean, I believe that's going to be up to the town, but yes, you, you know, May 9th? Okay, so, May 9th. Would that be acceptable to you?
Yeah, let's go ahead and see, let's do the May 9th thing, and then we'll see, obviously, if the seller will allow us to extend that item. If they don't, then we'll obviously let you know, and then we'll have no choice from that point and go from there.
I guess we should specify what the problem is. The parking's the main problem, I assume.
Parking conformity with the surrounding area, because again, and, you know, to what you were saying, there are no fiveplexes south of Spouse. So to me, that is an issue. I mean, this is, you're asking us to approve a brand-new product that no one has seen south of Spouse on Robert Road, and it only exists on the outskirts and north of Robert. So that's definitely something that we want to, you know, you need bring, for consideration. Definitely the parking and...
I agree. Parking is serious.
And then some of the other things. If there's any way to redo the design and have access off of Dana, anything like that could be, you know, if they push, but if they push the apartments closer to Robert, or multifamily closer to Robert, and then have access off of Dana, would that work?
Closer to Robert and Dana.
I don't think that can, we've talked about that configuration.
Okay. I'm just, again, just throwing anything out there, just so we, you know, okay.
The actual plan was going off of Dana that they said they had to come up from Robert Road.
So just to sort of reiterate, just to be clear, are we concerned that it's a fiveplex, we need to come back and rethink that? And of course, the parking as well? Are those the two key points that we need to look at? Or is the fiveplex, is that something we're not going to consider?
I think it's a concern. I mean, again, you're asking us to approve something that doesn't exist, and that is a concern. I mean, there are, you know, I agree with the transitional zoning. I'm not, you know, I speak for myself, I have no problems with that. It's just, this is something that, a fourplex, I think, fits more with, conforms with, again, one of the key things that the Planning and Zoning Commission has to look at, does it conform with the surrounding area? Does the zoning, and yes, the zoning is next on a road Dana, but not necessarily on Robert. Now, we have transitional zoning, which we're talking about, but again, does this make sense for this specific parcel, these two parcels?
Well, thank you. I appreciate the comment. I just want to make sure we're not setting up the applicant to fail. We don't want to tell them.
No, no. I think honestly, that's just, it's the parking issue, I think, honestly, if we could figure out a way, even with a fourplex, even triplex, anything like that to help alleviate some of these concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Apologize, let's take the fiveplex off the table for just a second. If the zoning were changed from C1 to RS, do you think that it would have sat for the last 16 years?
Absolutely not. It'd be gone.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ledger and Ms. Wumble, to go back with what was briefly said, we want you to succeed. I mean, I think in our heart of hearts, we want you to succeed. So I'll help you draw new plans.
That's one of the risks that we have. So are we saying then if we drop it down to a fourplex, that you guys would approve that? Because the parking, you said can't change it, so...
I don't think we're saying that you need to be artistic enough to go back and re-look at your two lots that you want to combine and bring forward another project on those two lots.
And I would say basically knock our socks off. That's really what it comes down to. You want to, you know, I'd come out with colored renderings, just give us, you know, the best possible, you know, scenario and case that you have, and go from there, but knock our socks off. That's what I would recommend. And if you're okay with continuing it to the May 9th, that's, you know, okay.
Yeah, we'll take that May 9th, and then like I said, we'll...
So with that, I'll go ahead and make, I'll entertain a motion to table ZMC 22-002 until the May 9th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to table ZMC 22-002 with the acceptance of the applicant to May 9th, 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Searcher?
Yes. We'll see you back in May. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, which is election of officers. We had to postpone this because we didn't have a full commission the last time. So election of officers, we haven't done this in a while. There's kind of two ways to do this. If there are multiple, we'll open the, open it up to nominations from the commission. If there are more than one nomination for any one position, we'll go to a ballot. But if there's just one nomination for one, you know, one person, one position, we'll go ahead and then ask for a vote. So with that, we have the two positions, chair and vice chair. We'll start with, I'll start with vice chair, and then we'll go to chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
Jack Rankin. Jack Rankin.
Oh, so, okay.
Vice Chair.
So you would nominate Larry Rankin to serve again as vice chair?
It's okay, Fred. It's all worse.
All right. Are there any other nominations from the commission? Seeing none, we'll, is there a second to the nomination?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to have Larry Rankin continue on as vice chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right. Moving on to chair, are there any nominations for chair?
I would like to nominate Mr. Matt Searcher.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, is there a second to the nomination?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye? All right. So, thank you. We'll continue, we'll continue on. Moving on to item number nine, call to public, call consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission?
Joe, where do you see your point? Matt, I want to ask the council here, the area that's on Viewpoint and Ponkorn Parkway behind Ponkorn Sales Office, what's going on with that property? Now, a couple of months ago, there was plans developed, it sent the guy back because they couldn't, had to add a street or something like that. Now there's a sign up there, it's available. So what's the story? Could you give us...
We can't answer that here, but we can definitely have staff answer that question for you.
Who's staff? Fernando?
Fernando, yes. Sir, we can't, we can't discuss it because it was on in Jennifer.
You're talking about this three months ago, and then all of a sudden, there's a big sign up there, it's for sale again.
So definitely, we can have Fernando get with you and give you the information. Any other questions from the comment, any from the public?
All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm over adjourn.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Move a second at all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah.